Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Ms. Alling is here, Ms. Ballantyne.
Here.
Ms. Hammond.
Here.
Mr. Jane.
Here.
Mr. Larson.
Here.
Mr. Samuel Lamb.
Here.
Mr. Schultz.
Here.
Uh, next in general, entertainer motion approve the agenda?
We approve the agenda as presented.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second on the vote? Motion carries seven zero. Uh, next, public announcements, recognitions, upcoming events.
I will be briefed tonight because we've got two young ladies that are gonna try to get to scholarship night by seven o'clock, so. Uh, first of all, I want to congratulate our forensics participants at the state meet. Uh, four in, uh, four different categories I want to recognize. Um, Annika Crone was an achievement award winner and copper medal winner. We also had a finalist recognition and a bronze medal for Cotten Bowling. Uh, all state silver medals to three different students, Evelyn Hansen, Brooklyn Jensen, and Faith Morbacher. And then, you can't get any better than this. Uh, Kate Powell had a perfect score, which is called the Critics' Choice Gold Medal, so congratulations to all those students. Um, got some other people here in tonight. Uh, we talked briefly last time because I think it had just been up on Facebook about the Jerry Awards for Matilda. There were fifteen nominations, uh, including outstanding musical, outstanding ensemble, outstanding orchestra. Um, you had Lucy Johnson and Ally who's here with us tonight, um, for outstanding lead performances nominations. Kennedy Sendock, Grady Maves, again Faith Morbacher, Lucy again, for outstanding supporting performances. And then Mr. Zableski for outstanding direction, uh, Mrs. Leahy and Mrs. Zableski for musical direction, um, as well, so. Uh, Ally, when, when are the actual awards?
Um, they actually, so, we found out who won.
Oh.
And, um, the winners are, um, for lead performance was I won for the lead performance.
Nice.
And then, thank you. And then for supporting performance, Kennedy Sendock for her role of Violet. And then our pit orchestra won for outstanding orchestra. And, um, so, on June eighth, we'll go to the awards and Kennedy will perform in the supporting ensemble. Um, they'll have a whole number of all the supporting winners. And then, I'll perform a minute of my song that I won for. And then, from there, I auditioned to go to the jimmies, which all of the lead performers who won, which is, I think, like fifty-five from our state, will audition then to go to New York this summer.
Ooh, awesome. Congrats.
Thank you.
Well, that's very timely. Uh, we also had prom two weekends ago that the junior class hosted, uh, a number of concerts that started to wrap up, actually wrapped up last night with the Pops concert. There was also a sixth through eighth grade concert that we had rescheduled, uh, to Monday and then a kindergarten concert with two performances the week before that. Uh, scholarship night, um, is tonight. Honors and awards night was last Wednesday and then fine arts night is a week from today. And happening right now is also the second grade folk fair with Mrs. Ross and Mrs. Wallish. Um, I think, uh, uh, I think Mark was just down there checking out, uh, some of the free food that was available. Uh, yeah, I had to cut it short. Round two, this meeting. Uh, coming up yet this week, we have, uh, hopefully better weather, it looks better, for, uh, Blue Devil Service Day, which is at Joni's Building, the middle school. On Friday, uh, there's no s- class for students, we will have our last professional learning day. And then that afternoon, recognize our retirees, which we have a couple more to talk about tonight. And then, uh, our years of service, uh, milestones. Uh, I mentioned fine arts night, there's going to be a senior walk, uh, on the last day of May, so seniors will be in cap and gown, go to the different buildings, which is awesome for them, but also the kids really do enjoy that and look up to them. Uh, Tris Talent Show, which I'm really excited to see for the first time, uh, since I saw, like, the list of participants and what they're doing, it should be really exciting. Uh, graduation is coming up really fast. In fact, uh, board president, Mr. Larson, has the last of the diplomas to sign, so that's happening quickly. Um, the fourth, we'll have eighth grade recognition and four K graduation. And then our last day of school is the fifth, that's a half day for everyone, so a lot of things to wrap up the school year here with tonight.
Alright, does anybody else have any announcements or recognitions?
I have a question, uh, what time is the ceremony? And is the board going to attend?
Uh, two PM, yes, and then we'll get you an invitation for that as well.
Alright, any public, uh, presentations? Alright, high school board reps, Tatum and Ally. Now it's your turn.
Yeah, we are so happy to present our long-awaited April high school report. So, we'll start with elementary and, um, right away when we walked in, it was just like gorgeous as we were like greeted with this stained glass-inspired artwork. It just like really showed kind of like the individual, individuality while bringing like some color into the school and joy at, into the elementary as we were entering spring at the time. And then, um, as well as we walked down the art hallway, um, we saw how the second graders demonstrated the ability to find beauty and art within everyday shapes through like the uniqueness of endless opportunities of each shape and color as we looked at their abstract art. And then, it was very cool to see that students who demonstrated outstanding behavior were selected to participate and the springtime fun during the assembly, which appreciated the hard work they had put in the school year so far with their education while promoting them to continually focus as we round out the school year. And then, just, um, the teachers all sneakily kind of got together and put together a spirit week to see if their students would notice to kind of just keep them on their toes.
Okay, and next for Tris, um, you can see up in the corner the Tennessee, that is one of the third graders', um, state floats. Each third grader makes their own float, they do their own research about, um, the state itself, different landmarks, different famous people who have lived there. And, um, I remember doing this and I think this is a great tradition that we do and they do such a good job. And then, um, on top of that, students were preparing for state testing. And for us personally, we thought that it was interesting to see the shift over the years that adjusts to the tech, technology advances between the time since we've been in elementary school. We were in Ms. Greavy Shannon's class and she was comparing it a lot to like, um, she was talking about how when they play games on their phones or they watch videos on YouTube or shorts, that their attention span is not as long as it should be. And how this testing might be hard and she was kind of preparing them for that, but I thought that was a really interesting, um, way to look at things. And then, from there, the fourth graders were rounding when we walked into their classroom and they were showing us their skills and they did a great job. And then, the positivity around the windows in the courtyard was so nice, you can see that, um, they did drawings for, um, just for the springtime and spreading kindness and I just love to see those things.
And then, within the middle school, um, we saw realism from the eighth graders as they had, um, remarkably like just captured like a little like snapshot of animals from their eyes and as we like, as we like stood closer to the glass and looked, we were able to see like each individual like stroke to like represent the fur and it was very impressive. And then, um, when we walked into a classroom, they were practicing grammar by correcting tweets from the famous basketball player Caitlin Clark, which was very funny because they were commenting how she needed to put periods and commas, but this very much kept the students engaged. And then, as well, the eighth graders were on their Holocaust unit, which, um, which I remember at the time was very most like memorable for me when I was in eighth grade. And it's like, and this unit's covered like more just beyond, um, history and just like really helps students like get a grasp of how dark these times were and how, how much we've come off from it. And then, um, we saw this little sweet appreciation for the janitors. And it was so nice to see because the janitors do, um, such a good job and I know it's not easy to keep a middle school clean. And then, and then for science Olympiad, um, the middle school science Olympiad team competed at, um, a state tournament held at UW Stout. And, um, the team earned an impressive ninth place overall, competing against some of like the best in the state, so it's very impressive. And then, the hard work and dedication paid off in a big way with the students bringing home, um, six, like six medals, including two first place, um, to finish in their events.
Um, next at the high school, um, you can see at the bottom left, that was Mrs. Bergen's class, her marketing class. And they did different food trucks, um, in marketing and they learned about the challenges and triumphs of entrepreneurship. So, what each group did is they came up with a business plan, made a food truck, and then they actually had to bring in some kind of food or treat that they made. And, um, I personally liked it because RAP, um, Lit went in there and we got to taste test everything. So you walk in and they give you, um, fake dollars and then you put it in and then whoever has the most money at the end wins. I think that's a really fun experiment and like real learning. And then, um, next you can see the brains made out of Play-Doh that were made in interpersonal relationships. It's a hands-on experience with the function of the brain and important role each one plays. And then, we actually just had our choir concert last night, our final one for this year. And here are two choir students, Faith and Lily, and they were both selected for the WSMAs State Honors Choir through the process of rigorous auditions. Fifteen, um, fifteen hundred auditions were registered for four hundred thirty positions in five ensembles. And that will participate in, um, Travel Honors Choir. They will both be able to attend a camp this summer to learn about concert music under the direction of Dr. Kerry Adams and Assistant Professor of Choral Music Education and Conductor, Conductor of Concert Corral at the University of Missouri. And then performed their music, um, at a conference in October at the Overture Center.
And then, just, um, um, big announcements was congratulations to Mr. Butch and, um, Mrs. Cuff as they were honored with the WAC, um, Award Banquet, which just kind of stands for Wisconsin Association of School Councils. Mr. Butch was honored, um, as the Senior High School Administrator of the Year. And this year, wait, this year is given to Adam Minister who has been nominated for showing outstanding support for students in their school and throughout the state. And then Mrs. Cuff was awarded WSC Region Five Advisor for, wait, sorry, Region Advisor for the fifth year in a row. Um, and which recognizes her for contributing to the cause of student leadership and growth in the state of Wisconsin, which is so sweet for her because I just remember her really helping us out when we were in middle school and just starting out in student council and really getting us interested in that at a younger age. And, um, the choir students, well, not the choir, but the choir and band students, um, had the opportunity to travel to New Orleans over their spring break just, um, so that the students could really like indulge in like the music culture there. I know a lot of them loved it. And especially, it just really helped strengthen, um, their knowledge in music and just showing them what else is out there. And then, um, as well as Matilda, the musical had its, was beginning to start up with tickets being sold and students were getting ready to show off their hard work, um, that they'd put months into preparation to show just their, their love for the musical as well as just to show off to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Where you go ladies, I have, uh, on behalf of the board, some gifts for you for your book this year. Um, Tatum is, uh, going to Edgewood and I, you play soccer, right? So, uh, there is a bookstore gift card for you for Edgewood.
Thank you.
And then Ally's got a scholarship to UW Madison, so there's a UW Madison bookstore gift card for you too, so buy some swag and circle it around.
Thank you so much, it's been a great experience.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck tonight.
Thanks.
Alright, moving on to district administrator update.
Uh, before I get into my report, just a couple of, uh, updates on donations, they continue to, to come into the district. Uh, Tom and Stacy do a nice job, Stacy has created a spreadsheet and then Paige follows up to make sure that those that have donated to the district get a letter, uh, not only for tax purposes, but as a thank you as well. Uh, so just in the last, uh, month or so, we had a sixty dollar donation from the Flones, that's fairly typical of them, uh, to the music departments at both Tris and then J.C. McKenna. We also had a hundred and fifty dollar donation from Henry and Jane Youngman, uh, to improvements to the Performing Arts Center. Uh, on that note, I believe there will be another large anonymous donation coming into the PAC, um, sometime soon as well. And when we get that, we'll let the board know that's a specific approval, uh, because it's, would be over a, a five thousand dollar amount. Uh, eighteen hundred dollars came in from the PTO, Stacy Kramer, um, is doing a great job with some of that now with some transitioning within the PTO. She asked, uh, about, uh, recognition, I said, yeah, make sure that you let us know what you're donating so that we can recognize the PTO. So the PTO in the last month or so gave three hundred dollars to the Science Olympiad team, which you heard about, and then another fifteen hundred dollars in science supply, so thank you to the PTO. Uh, CHS, which, boy, I hope they're still planning on building here in Evansville, gave twenty-five hundred dollars, which I think is a good sign, to our FFA. And then last but not least, fifty dollars from Jane Topitz, uh, James Topitz's, uh, toward the track and field program. So those are our more, most recent donations. Um, just next week, uh, we'll take a donation that we got earlier from the Hughes's, uh, toward lunch accounts, we're going to apply the last round of balances, um, that donation to the last round of balance, we, we had done about half of that earlier in the year and we'll do one more round of that before the end of the year as well. Uh, in my report, we are just coming to the end of advanced placement testing season. That started way back on May, uh, fifth and we'll go through the twenty, well, technically the twenty-third, which is Friday, we don't have school that day. Uh, right now, we estimate a hundred and twenty-five high school students here in Evansville will take two hundred and thirty-five exams. So, you can see on average, most of these students are taking more than one. That's in eleven different content areas, uh, just to give you an example, some are, uh, we've got large numbers taking, uh, English Lit, uh, English Language, and then Psychology, and at the lower levels, um, a World History exam. And then some very small numbers taking like a computer science exam. Uh, just for everyone's knowledge, including those that are working or are watching online, a qualifying score in an AP exam is a three, four, or five out of five. If you get a qualifying score, almost every private and public school in Wisconsin will give you that same amount of credit. So if you get a three on the AP exam, usually that's three credits. On average, maybe not at Beloit, but at others, uh, a credit in the state, depending where you go, it's probably somewhere around a thousand dollars. So if you're talking about passing one AP exam, three thousand bucks. Not only that, but, uh, you're also looking at getting those credits before you enter, which means that you get to schedule before your other classmates, which means that you might not have to take a ADM exam or ADM course, for example. Um, you get some, uh, benefits out of that. And then again, uh, being able to graduate early, hopefully saving yourself and maybe your family some money, uh, as well. So that's, that's great news for the AP exams.
Can I ask a question about?
Yeah.
Won't we get the results? Will we know the total number of threes, fours, and fives?
We will. Um, oddly enough, those come on and I, I don't know if Crystal's taught AP before, but you actually can get them the day after Fourth of July. So it seems like you're in the middle of summer, thought, thinking about Fourth of July and then your AP results are there. Students get them the same time, in fact, some will stay up at midnight on July fifth to see what they got.
Very cool. And they need to be able to do that math for them and say, we saved, you know, students who are there in college a total of approximately this amount.
Absolutely. That was something that, um, having been a principal, I had created spreadsheets year after year to so you could see where those numbers were and, um, had helped a little bit of with our high school staff. And now Mark and I have been looking at a spreadsheet that will document all that for the board. Uh, can't show you a lot, but just wanted to give you an update. Um, we do have our ACT results back, but those were embargoed in, until October. So the board has some information that we can't share publicly. We can say in general that the ACT at the high school is down and that's the reason that we've been talking about almost all year now, why the plan for next year is to have every so, uh, freshman, sophomore, and junior take the pre-ACT in the fall as a practice, uh, timed practice. So that we'll have baseline data for the rest of the year. And then, whether they take the pre-ACT as a ninth or tenth grader or the ACT as a junior, we'll then have a post-test. And then there's a, uh, software that we'll be using, uh, in that flex try time at the high school called Methodize. I've linked that for the board. Uh, but if they go through, uh, it usually is only about twenty minutes per day. Um, if you do that and you do that over an eighteen-week, uh, program, again, twenty minutes a day, they will see usually composite scores, which is the most important, um, of three points from the beginning to the end. And really what it does is it, it lets kids know what they, what, um, it gives them some comfortable, um, and some familiarity with the types of questions that are asked, but then also the timing of, of the exam as well. Some students go too fast and rush and then some go too slow and have to have a guessing, uh, strategy at the end of the ACT. But, um, we will, uh, begin that next year and I think it's gonna be good for kids, especially those motivated kids. But even on the ACT, you're getting, uh, college and career readiness score, uh, for tech school or even going into the military or right into work. Um, parents, this is probably what Methodize, um, would be worth if you just try to buy that on your own and take a ACT, uh, course. It's probably somewhere around a hundred and fifty dollars at the school is a lot, you know, you can do work on it anytime, day, night, weekend, summer. Um, and then I think our staff, they're gonna get a lot of information. What skills do our students have? What skills do our students not have? And be able to use that information. So we're, um, you know, anything new is kind of scary for staff, but I think this is gonna be a really good change at the high school. Uh, in other news, uh, I did share, and Paige, you can go to this, um, our social media, uh, we, we partner with socialschool.foredu, hashtag for edu. And our account manager is a lady by the name of Jess Leonard. I, I usually call her Jess, but then we've got Jess Erdol and it gets confusing sometimes. But Jess Leonard is absolutely fantastic. I had a lot of reservations that we shared with Paige and some others at the beginning of the year when I said, so this is a company we just send stuff to and then they post. Um, but they are catching all kinds of things. One thing, just to let you know that you probably would never see, but if you go to other school districts' Facebook pages, um, you're never going to see any spamming on our Facebook page, so you're not gonna see any of that because they're monitoring that and taking that down. Um, the other piece that you see is that they will take something that a teacher or even me sends to them and then soup it up quite a bit, whether they're making it into a reel or they add graphics, uh, a nice design in the background. And the other things that they almost always catch, um, are, uh, any kind of negative comment they may bring to me and say, hey, are you aware that it's on there? Do you want it up or down? Uh, because we allow comments, it's got to be fairly, um, uh, either, uh, some type of swearing or nastiness that we take it down. Otherwise, it is a public forum and we do leave that off. Uh, but they let us know about that, in fact, I think Crystal found one earlier that they didn't catch. Uh, but they're not on call twenty-four hours a day, but they are monitoring a lot of that. And you can see that, um, that our numbers are up and then all the special days that you see, so even like, uh, the last one was Sunday, it was our, uh, speech pathologist day. Um, they give us a calendar of all those events and then they send us, like, what would you like to post about this? They give us about three or four weeks lead time and then they'll put together the post for it. We can choose not to post on certain things. We can send them other things, but, uh, our social media is doing well and is growing and, um, they've been a, a really good partner with us. Uh, that last page, um, human trafficking has come up in Evansville, i- if you're reading the papers, knowing what's happening locally with some of our stories from this spring, and I won't go real personal, but, um, something that like Elliot, Elliot and I have talked about, um, with education for not only our students, but our community as well. And so I'm attending, uh, human trafficking session, uh, with the, with the county on the thirtieth. And then our plan is to bring that back to the high school, potentially the middle school, but, but we're really gonna focus on the high school right now. And in Nikki Olson's health classes, have speakers come in to speak to those students. And then, secondly, hopefully coordinated around that same time, uh, staff, um, a training with our staff, all of our staff, so that they know what they should be looking for. And then a nighttime session with parents. Um, having been through similar training in the past, the one thing that they do say is that it's the students that are the most likely to identify that there is some sort of problem. Whether it's, uh, somebody that's a little bit older that's introduced to a group, um, withdraw from the student, excuses from the student, they're not coming around anymore, changes in appearance, anything like that. And so, um, with what's happened in our community, and I think I linked in there, uh, something from Whitewater just in the last two weeks, um, it's important that we help to talk about that as a community. And then last but not least, um, our wellness clinic, actually something that we'll talk about tonight with benefits, um, is, is doing pretty well. Um, there's been fifty-five thousand dollars of deferred costs. So for example, um, when you make an appointment to come to our wellness clinic on a bimonthly basis, um, you're not going to your doctor, your family doctor, you're not going to urgent care. And the cost that you'd usually be applied to our insurance, what's called an experience rating, um, doesn't go onto it. So it, it does really help the bottom line for us, but it's really convenient. If we could get even more days, we would fill them up. Paige has done a really nice job with a signup genius now and because of that, they know exactly what spots are open, what aren't. And if we could get more time, especially after school, um, like that three to five time slot where staff are just maybe picking up their kid and coming back or going themselves right after school, we would fill them up almost immediately. So that's been great for us. And then last but not least, Griffin has been really helpful. Um, our safety committee has met with two providers, one's called Single Wire, the other one is Navigate Three Sixty. And what they do is, a couple things, it, it came up because, uh, if we are at, uh, some kind of evacuation, could even be a fire drill. And one of the things that we, uh, could struggle with is attendance. So for example, let's imagine that, uh, Mitch is a teacher and he's got a, a kid that's gone to the bathroom during a drill. And then the alarm goes off, he goes out, he doesn't know what happened to that kid that left his classroom a couple of minutes ago. On this platform, um, somebody else could claim that student, like, I do have this student, he's not mine this hour, but I do have them. That would help, especially if we have a major event and we're having to do that off-site. The other thing that they have within some of these platforms is, um, with reunification, which is a very tough thing for, for schools to organize, is a way for a parent to check in, then sign for their student, even with like their ID that they have them. And then we can see who's already been accounted for and then who has, still needs to get picked up by parents. Um, there's that, there's link to our safety plan, our digital maps, all kinds of things, and, uh, the price is actually fairly reasonable. So, uh, Griffin And the price is actually fairly reasonable. So Griffin and I will get together, see what we can do. Right now, the other thing is that we use Raptor. Some of you may have had to check in with Raptor. That goes into a national database for sex offenders, because we don't want anybody entering our building like that. And one of the platforms, a Single Wire, could replace that and then create a package where there's one platform for almost everything that we do with safety. So we're looking at that right now.
Are there any questions from Mr. Perry?
I am, I think that I am on the communications committee. So I'm pretty interested in helping to magnify this social media presence. And I like the data that's been provided. I presume this is from the company we're using. And some of them have a lot of hits, but some of them have like way a lot of followers compared to the enrollment. Whereas ours is, I mean, maybe it's because it's still growing. I don't remember how many years it's been, maybe five have we had this?
Actually, I think it's, Paige, you know, like more like three, something like that, three?
So probably the last year I was on, when we started it, so yeah. But yeah, I, I don't know if, like, they, like, they show the growth for each of the different platforms here. I don't know if that's a good growth, a bad growth, a medium growth, you know. I would really like to delve down into that and how, how do we, because it could be a really useful tool for non-parental citizens to be able to hit information.
And they do have some of that, down to almost a science of when you post during the day, you're always going to see, almost always, if we've got one, you're going to see a 6:00 AM post. And then you're also going to see a nighttime post. There's also a couple of sweet spots within the day, sometime around lunch. And then they call it the drop-off line or the pickup line, so right around the end of the school day. And those are key times where they know, especially parents, might be on their phones and on social media and looking at things. And you'll see right at 6:00 AM, there'll be things that are up. And people, because they're waking up, looking at their phones for the first time, you'll see a lot of likes and shares and comments really early in the morning.
What's Shawna doing? They're reaching 250,000 people a month? That's crazy.
That, that, I don't know. One powerhouse in our area is Mineral Point. Joelle Doye was president of the school communications group at one point in time. And very similarly, we had, had met with her at one point when she was doing certain things. And she had, she had some suggestions for us as well. The other thing that you'll see is when you get out something informational. So for example, even though it was a nice event, our ATODA event, there's not a lot of interaction with that. Anytime that you get pictures of kids, alumni, some sort of celebration or accomplishment, those are going to take off. And what you see is where it really goes, where you can get, let's say, 10,000 share, excuse me, 10,000 likes, is when you get something that people are sharing multiple times down the road.
And I would say even in the, in the last year and a half, just hearing from Jess and then Stephanie Sins is kind of like the overarching of it, our data has skyrocketed just in the last year and a half.
And really, it's dependent on, on the staff and the, and the principals, like Joni does a nice job. She's here tonight with like the awards that they do at Blue Devil Strong Breakfast, like that always does really well. Students of the Month do well, anything like that does really well. And, but we are dependent on our staff to take a couple of photos, make sure they're not on the no photo list, and then write up at least a small summary to get that out.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to benefit insurance renewals.
So really, the, the, the meeting for tonight is the, is why we're here with, with benefits. In terms of a timeline, we need an approval so that we can have our open enrollment period so staff knows exactly what they're enrolling into, if they're not currently on our plan. Or if they're on our plan and want to compare, potentially going off to a spouse's plan, what those are. And we of course want to do that before the end of the fiscal year, at the end of, of June. So tonight, we'll look at an approval for health insurance renewal, dental, vision, short and long-term disability, and then life insurance. I did pull the property and vehicle insurance because we don't have a quote from our current vendor. We have one from a competitor, but not from our current vendor. She keeps saying that she's waiting on some information from others. So this is antsy, and like most insurance companies, they might sub out other parts of it and are waiting on those bids back. Because then they're going to take the most comprehensive and best price and then add it to our plan. I did include, both in the public comment and in the board's information, a link to our benefit guide. That's really nice that USI puts that together for us, because when we do have potential applicants, people that we're interviewing, people that we're offering jobs to, and they ask for that as up-to-date information. And then again, once we have board approval on any changes, that will get updated. And then USI, Tom, Laura, will be able to get that out to our, to our staff. On the personnel committee, which again, just reformed after board reorganization, we've got Mitch, Elliot and Hope. And then we did meet just a week or so ago. That was myself, Tom, our business manager. And then we had two representatives from the EEA, Michelle Klopp and Christina Ross, and then the EEAA president, Lindsay Reese, on that as well. What Paige has up is Al Jaeger, who works for USI. And again, for newer board members, what USI does for us is they're looking out for the district's best interests in terms of almost all things insurance outside of property and auto insurance. Everything else they have a hand in. And what they're trying to do is to get the best package for us at the best price for us. And they work, Al himself, I think, works with something like 80, something like that, different districts. So he has a fantastic handle on what's happening in the market with other school districts, private sector, public sector, and is just a wealth of, of knowledge. So he presented. The other thing that, and you, you might want to just page a couple down. I'll show you an example of what we're having USI do for us. If you keep going, there's going to be a, right there. So when our initial projections come in, they're saying for, for our SSM dean, we'd be at almost 12%, 11.9% on our renewal. We were capped at 9.9%, which is great. And one of the reasons that we are able to get to a cap is we've got a lot of our employees getting for preventative screenings, which of course dean wants to see. Then Al goes to work and gets that negotiated down to seven and a half percent. And actually, there's a little bit that we'll talk about tonight where there's a blending. So we do have an employee that's on an HRA that was grandfathered in and not our high deductible plan. And so when you actually look at the renewal, it's more like 6.1%, not 7.5%. But that's what Al's doing behind the scenes for us, is negotiating and saying, you can do better than that, and pushing on them. So when we met, we looked at three different health insurance options. One was a, and that's the one that's in the grid below in both public and board information. There was three different options, a 7.5% increase. And again, we had budgeted for about a 5% increase. And so the difference there was about $58,000 or so. That keeps the plan in place. Why is that important? Even in your own personalized, anytime something changes with insurance, new card, new plan, trying to figure out different deductibles, different monthly costs, potentially different copays, it causes issues obviously for.
Stressful.
Yes, it's stressful. So the more that we can keep that stable, the better. There was a second option, which would make the increase only a half of a percent. But basically, what's happening, happening there is you're taking the increase and you're passing that along to our own employees. So instead of a 4,000 single and a 8,000 family plan deductible, it would go to $5,000 for single and then $9,200 for, for family. Then the third option would be you keep those deductibles the same, 4,000 for single person and $8,000 for family. But the max out-of-pocket is higher. So even though your deductible is $5,000 for a single person, it could be $6,000 out-of-pocket. Same thing on a family plan, it could be a max of $9,200 out-of-pocket. That would be a 2.6% increase. When we looked at that originally, USI thought, well, that might only affect 15, maybe 20% of your employees. And that's why Tom and I pursued that option to say, well, if it's only, you know, a fifth of our employees that would get hit with that, we could get our renewal rate down to 2.6. We'd really be interested in that. But when it came back, it was north of 40%, so almost half of our employees would be impacted by that. So just a couple of notes, and again, we do have a recommendation for the district to pick up the seven and a half percent increase. And there's a couple of things happening there. One is that we're in year one of our three-year operating referendum. And because there were hires that we had anticipated coming back this year, that either we couldn't hire back due to the pools, or the timing wouldn't work in the middle of the year, we are in a really good spot, and Tom will kind of update us a little later on that with the budget. We know that there's over $600,000 in, in year one of the referendum that we have to move to year three of the referendum. That, even with that, there's going to be a large surplus. Tom and I are confident, and this will be an agenda item for the next meeting, that there's going to be at least as large a transfer, and remember, last year that was over half a million dollars, into Fund 46 and then fund balance, that we're going to be able to do a lot of the work on the HVAC that we're planning on, and actually have JP Cullen working on that right now. In addition to that, I, I wanted to point out, just so that people publicly maybe hear what this really is out-of-pocket. So there is, and, and HSA obviously that we're, that we're contributing to. So even if you took the deductible, then took the HSA, but then, don't forget that there is also staff paying their own monthly portion, which will go up seven and a half percent, that out-of-pocket for family is truly 65, over $6,500 per year. That's a net. So if somebody's making, let's say we've got a newer teacher, they're making about $50,000, you're really deducting, taking away $6,500 off of that if they're on a family plan. The total increase for that would be about $160,000. That sounds like a lot, but the school district's budget's $25 million. So when you look at what 160 means, it is less than a seven thousandths of our budget. Typically, we know from school districts, right, you're spending 7% to 80% on people and, and benefits. This is not a long-term commitment. Even Hope, Mitch, Elliot, that were on the committee, this is, this is a year that we can handle this. In other years where the budget is not in the shape that it is in right now, we would say, we can't absorb this. There's going to have to be either a larger contribution from employees or a change in plans. But this year is certainly the year to do that. The other thing I will mention is this is largely a competitive balance sort of an issue, where we want to keep our good staff. And then when we're looking at what other districts are doing, and Al always talks about comparing with other districts nearby, similar sizes, who are actually competing, maybe even losing staff to, that's who you should be looking at. It's, it's much different to try to compare what a school district has to offer to a private sector, for example. So just with our local area, and Al's got a couple of different comparisons. Lloyd Turner, similar size, half hour away in our conference. Edgerton, our rival, very close to us. Milton, larger district, but not too far away. And then Parkview, smaller district, 20 minutes away. Those are some of the comparables. You'll notice that if you take out the HSA contributions, that Evansville would have higher deductible, really higher end deductibles than everyone but Parkview. And I'm not here to bash Parkview, but they failed three referendums, and I don't know if that's really what we want to be comparing ourselves to at this time. When you look at the others, there is only one that, excuse me, two, I'll take that back one more time. Edgerton only has higher employee contributions, but I'm going to dive into that a little bit more. It looks like from the information that you have, it could be Turner and it could be Milton. But Milton and Turner also have two plan options. So depending on which plan option you have in Milton and Turner, you could be certainly spending less on what you wanted to choose. So let's just take Edgerton versus Evansville, because it, it, it will, will shed some light on this. If you took what our deductibles are, and then what our HSA contributions are, and then you took the monthly. So Edgerton's deductible is really small, it's like $90. But their monthly is much higher than ours. Even if you took all of that into comparison, somebody in Edgerton would be paying $1,200 less on a family insurance plan than somebody in Evansville right now. And so that's why Tom and I in the committee are recommending that we absorb the seven and a half percent cost on that, because it really does, more so than ever, and I'm not sure if it's happening with Joni, but I know it's happening with Mark and I know it's happening with Janessa. When we're hiring new people, more and more so than ever before, they also want to see what the benefit package is. Because they want to know where they are right now and compare it. And then if, if they could go on their spouse's insurance, what that would look like as well. And so again, it's, it's been a trend probably in the last four to five years, probably since COVID and where we had 0% increases during COVID. And then things have started to come back up that we're having employees or potential employees ask for that.
So I, I just want to like make a remark about that, because Edgerton has like pretty much implemented the employee percent contribution that is industry standard. Industry standard is about 30%. Edgerton's at 28. That's ridiculous. They also have an additional $3,000 out-of-pocket expenses required. So they're, somebody in Edgerton, just there, has to pay $8,300. I cranked the numbers all afternoon and I was like, I thought it looked bad, but it's really bad. Like in, in Evansville, it's second worst at 6,550, right? And Parkview is better than us on, yeah, on the family plan. So, um, those, I feel like, you know, what we need to focus on is like Milton's got some good numbers. And they got good numbers because they're, let's see, what is it called? Their current year over prior year expenses are so much better. How in the world are they saving over $100 a month per employee, per month on their own claims? That is a lot. And everybody else, it's more. And this is where their overall numbers, they got a Dean HSA, we got a Dean HSA. They have somehow managed to finagle so that their people are able to have lower claims.
Yeah, and Tom and I have talked a little bit about that, and Al even mentioned it. Al believes that the worst of it in Evansville is coming to an end and that the trend will be better for us. Part of that is our experience rating obviously, but then also how much we use that in district clinic has helped some as well. Tom and I noticed right away, and Tom pointed it out, what we're being charged is much higher than in other districts. But again, Al's saying, we were really in a bad spot for a while, and that's going to turn the corner. He believes it's going to turn the corner soon. We're starting to see that now.
Can I add to that? So when Al came, obviously, like, I probably asked a lot of questions just because I do this every day. But one of the main reasons is because with fully insured insurances, there, it's just a different outlook. And I don't know what these other schools are having, but a lot that takes place is we're not educating our s- well, we weren't, I should say, educating our staff on how to use the resources appropriately. So for example, people were going to the hospital when they could have gone and called their primary. And those, every time they file claims, that makes us either look bad or look good, right? Depending on where they went, so that plays a factor as well as we, and I confirm this with you and Al, is there's lasers, right? So we had, it sounds like, two people that um, made our claims go up higher. So for example, if someone, you know, um, had, I don't know, cancer, and we, they're on our insurance. And that ta- took a huge part of our claim process. They, the insurance looks at it for forecasting and says, well, if that person's still going to be on your plan next year, you are looking at this much instead of this much. So for example, if I were to take that person off before that fiscal year would have ended, it would have looked better for us forecast numbers. So there's a, there's a line between, well, you can't kick people off legally if they have these high claims, right? So you just have to be able to forecast it right. And the other part is, are we educating our staff, which, in my opinion, we can educate our staff better on how to utilize our resources, especially for those who have been at the district for a long time. And their onboarding was sixteen years ago, right? Like, um, and the plans have changed. So if we educate our staff better, if we continue to do the um, the clinic and give those opportunities. I think, like you're saying, Nate, our our rates will get better. As well as, the other thing we have to look into is, how much are we getting charged administration fees for them? So like, per employee per month, for example, at Beloit, I pay four hundred dollars for Anthem per employee. Or is it per member, right? There's, there's all those little factors that I think we can always do better at.
And I think one of the, to that point, one of the points that Al made was that um, those higher, those few outliers that push our claims higher, like the more we do push the preventative care, more we engage in the educate our our employees to engage in the clinic, the more we catch some of those issues earlier. And the less likely it is to turn into a high claim health scenario. Also, less likely it is to im- have our employees impact, have their health impacted worse, like, sorry, that wasn't very articulate.
I think there's a lot of factors.
Yeah, we're trending and it seems like from everything he presented, we're trending in a positive direction.
Yeah, the the percent loss ratio is now under a hundred percent, it's been over a hundred percent for several years. Um, and so that historically drove higher rates for Evansville. So yeah, you compare to other districts, we saw the seven and a half percent, another district might see a twelve percent. But our seven percent is on a higher starting number. But I think other districts will now start to, start to catch up some, uh, but we still need to take care of ourselves and have um, proper claims. And that's where the wellness clinic has been great, our data continues to uptick. I think the one year requirement of the preventative visits was a great kind of forced education to meet the staff. It's the same staff here that's in Edgerton if they or their family go to the Edgerton Clinic. So I think that really helped with a lot of buy-in.
And our catastrophic is at a hundred thousand, right?
I believe so.
You know, that's something we can always look into too.
Yet, yet, oh, go ahead.
I was gonna ask, um, in the PowerPoint that they shared, is there, are these the districts that um, USI works with?
Yes.
So the districts that are not on here, they would not be able to speak to what their stuff is, I'm just, like, Jamesville's not on there.
Yeah, they uh, they would not be a USI client.
Right.
Um, that being said, if that information was shared with us, we could compare it.
There's talk though, I'm sure there's talk.
Yeah.
But definitely not data.
These are actual USI clients, and we have regular meetings, both um, in person and um, video where we talk a lot about wellness clinic and different items that are going on between the districts.
The other piece that ties into the recommendation of the seven and a half percent and absorbing that is uh, we know that there is going to be um, for two years, uh, no increase in our dental, which is our uh, our self-funded dental. And then we also pay long-term disability for our employees, and there's no increase in this upcoming year there. So there'll be some, see some savings there as well. One, one other piece that I wanted to add is the life insurance, and I'll try not to get too personal here, but it 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 did feel very personal this year. Um, you all know we had a staff member that passed away this year. And being new to the district, I did not know, because I'd never worked in a district, where there wasn't an employer-provided basic life insurance program. And when I found that out, I can remember Laura Jorkinson coming to my office and saying um, that uh, that it's an opt-in. And so when you opt in, the district pays half and the employee pays half. But not everybody was in that plan. And so I did provide the board with some information about, for example, our educational assistants. Many of them um, are working really to have the insurance, they're they're not taking home a lot of money. And so uh, this was important to me to make sure that, one, it's a benefit that, because almost every other district has this, that we offer it. And here's the dollar amount on this. So the district paying half of this old policy that we're looking at, paid about seventy three hundred dollars last year in life insurance. For uh, another ninety two hundred dollars, we're talking about two hundred and four, forty employees. So for just over sixteen thousand dollars, we can get a death benefit at fifty thousand dollars for all of our employees. Now, if you think about that, a, an educational assistant working nine months of the year might make twenty seven thousand dollars per year. So for them, this is a, a big benefit. For our teaching staff, um, some of them are making more than fifty thousand dollars, it might not be, you know, quite as important. But I think it's, it's essential, having happened what happened this last year, that the district has that, at least that minimum of fifty thousand dollar death benefit. Um, you know, you hear the commercials on on the radio, you can't plan for some of these things. And that's not something that obviously, as people are going through treatment, or there's an accident, that you want families to have to think about. And again, for nine thousand dollars more for all two hundred and forty employees in the district, uh, the district could offer uh, could offer a fifty thousand dollar death benefit.
To me, it just seems like such a small amount for us to pay to make such a huge difference in a family during a really terrible time in their life.
It's insane that we don't have it yet.
All right, are there any other questions? Now, let's move on to April financials.
All right, uh, for the April financials related to the reports, there isn't much activity really that's going on in April. Um, I do, I'll touch on a couple of key points, but April, uh, before jumping in, really, April has been focused a lot on um, the health insurance as well as looking at life insurance, um, as well as we are going through the process of the hailstorm claim. Um, so that's been a lot of time there, as well as just preparing and wrapping up for year end. Um, which again, we'll talk about budget amendment and Fund Forty Six transfer at the next meeting, um, with the the surplus from this year. Um, and then um, looking into next year and just kind of forecasting next year, we're looking at kind of that break even. Um, we still don't have a state budget, um, and then we would have that deficit in that third year. So we need to be mindful of that as we look at year end. Um, so on the, on the revenue side, uh, no aid deposits or anything significant coming in um, through the month of April. So a relatively low uh, month, but looking at uh, year over year and year to date, continues to um, trend and look favorable. Um, again, referendum, when you're looking at year over year, is two differing amounts, um, so that's something to always keep in mind. With really our large sources being our property tax, which would be our referendum, and then our equalization aid, um, which is the aid from the state of Wisconsin. Um, on the expense side as well, that continues to be favorable to budget, as well as year over year actuals. Uh, a lot of that is driven by vacancy or different programs, supplies, investments that were not brought back. Um, or weren't brought back for the full year. Um, we have to keep in mind as well with the November referendum, even things that may have started in December or January, you're still halfway through your, your financial year, so um, we're not going back in time to to make those expenses. Um, so yeah, that's really the, the conclusion, really, like I said, pretty, pretty light. April, May will ramp back up with uh, more grant claims and deposits, and then a lot of the um, final state deposits come in in June. And then we receive some July deposits, property tax, and a few state ones that are booked back or credited back to June.
All right, are there any questions for Al? If not, we'll move on to bad business action items, the first one up.
Thanks, Tom.
First one up, the second reading and approval updates of professional staff three thousand and support staff four thousand policy, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to adopt the updates since twenty twenty-two to the professional staff three thousand series and support staff four thousand series NEOL policies as presented.
Is motion is there, is it second? Second, any discussion? Now, let's vote. I don't think you have that page. Motion carries seven zero, next, for approval of the extension of Jedi Virtual School Contract and Consortium Agreement. Looking for an entertain, or entertainer motion for that?
I make a motion to approve the extension of the Jedi Virtual Contract and Consortium Agreement as presented.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, any discussion? Now, let's vote. Motion carries seven zero, last is the, looking for a motion to approve the district's health and health dental vision, short-term, long-term disability, life, and, oh, doesn't have, we won't have the property view, right?
Yeah, the motion is correct.
Dana motion?
I make a motion to approve the health dental vision, short and long-term disability, and life insurance renewals beginning July first, two thousand twenty-five as presented.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, any discussion?
I'll just note that I'm going to be abstaining from this because of my spouse's employment. Thank you, clarify that.
Uh, if not, let's vote. Motion carries six zero with one abstain. All right, moving on to consent, does anybody want anything removed?
Just have two comments because we had some late retirees, just wanted to recognize, and we will do that on Friday afternoon. Uh, Jane Sperry, boss is here tonight, Jane's been in the district since nineteen ninety-five. In the same position, not switching positions for thirty years. Um, and I think of like her moving from the old middle school, all the construction that happened to the new beautiful J.C. McKenna Middle School. Um, I also think about just the trends that she would have seen in middle school over that time. Um, is, would be, would be fascinating. Uh, I I checked with Jane, she's worked for five principals um, over that time. And I I'm thinking of what our class sizes are at the middle school over thirty years. And so Jane's probably had somewhere around nine thousand students come through the building during her time. And I know when Joni told me, Joni was, you know, his point of it, very happy for Jane, she's, I I think, excited. Uh, but it will be like, that's an, that's an institutional, like historical knowledge loss, so want to, want to thank Jane. And then, very, very similarly, Cindy Zableski, so Cindy's been here since nineteen ninety-six. Uh, had actually had seven years of experience before she came here. And if you just think of all the things that she has touched in the district, the musical, the fall play, vocal jazz, um, Rock Val- Rock Valley Conference Honors Choir, um, band and choir trips, like this last year to New Orleans. Um, I mean, at the, even at the younger grades, tris singers, tris drumming and xylophone. And of course, this year, the sixtieth anniversary of the musical, and she was musical director for, what do I have in there? I think sixteen of those, so many that she actually had repeated some of them, like she's done guys and dolls twice. Um, so again, that's a very tough position, I know they were actually um, looking at interviews uh, recently. And uh, she'll be another huge loss to the district, but you know, Doug's been retired a couple of years now, he's been subbing. Um, and so I know she thought long and hard about that, um, had had a conversation with her, and um, so we'll really miss Cindy as well.
All right, if nobody wants anything removed, thank you, Mr. Perry. Um, I'll entertain a motion to approve consent.
I move to approve, oh, sorry, I haven't done this one before. Uh, I move to approve consent agenda items A through C.
The motion, is there a second? There's a second, vote. Motion carries seven zero, next is uh, future agenda, does anybody want anything um, added or removed, changed?
Do we know if we'll get the other insurance back then?
Um, we should have it by then, yes, we, we do have TRICORS, we're waiting on I N C, and we should have it by then. Um, I do need a date for our first communications committee, that would be um, Ryan and Melissa. My preference would be the ninth of June, would that work for the two of you? Gets us out of school by a few days.
The other week is that month?
Yeah.
Monday? You were.
Okay, um, policy committee, um, we're keeping moving forward, there's a few more to review this time. Um, that's Elliot, Crystal, and now Ryan, um, what does June fifth look like for you? Otherwise, I could do June fourth, I know Crystal's got the event at the school year, so I'm hesitant.
I could do like six P M. Six P M on either day works for me as well.
Uh, six on the, six P M on the fifth is perfect.
All right, thank you. And there will be another, um, just to you, so you know, another personnel committee. Um, obviously, just to give the benefits recommendation, um, that one will be on employee handbook changes, but I'll have to uh, set that up. Uh, we'll do a bit more lead. Can we do five P M? Because usually we'll have some staff members there, and I hate to start it much later than that.
The finance slash
Facilities, yeah, so we are waiting on that, we just had, um, I don't know what that took us, we went about three hours with uh, JP Cullen on Monday, and we had our list including HVAC concerns at both buildings. Um, some concrete work, there's some other things there as well. Um, that's outside of roofs, which we're still working on with the hail damage. Um, and they're supposed to have a general um, costing out for those, once we get that from Cullen, which by the way, they're not charging us for, um, just our partnership that's been in the past with all the building that they've done here, including the middle school. Um, so once we get that, then we'll have a better idea of when we can schedule that facilities and and So once we get that, then we'll have a better idea of when we can schedule that facilities and, and finance committee. And then again, just at the next meeting, two heads up with the athletics, excuse me, activities athletics handbook. I did ask Mr. Butch to talk a little bit about name, image and likeness, which is coming to high school athletics, and also about a removal of any kind of limited contact hours. Coaches have now unlimited contact hours over the summer. So that'll be something he'll talk about. Mr. Schwartz, Mr. Crandall and I, when Mrs. Guard presents her school to career report, remember? We had mentioned to you, if the budget could hold, we may be looking for some help for Linda Guard. Remember, she's got thirty-five youth apprentices for next year. Ju, remember, she only works twenty hours per week. Just looking at three onsite visits for thirty-five youth apprentices is over a hundred employer visits during the year. And then she's doing everything else with that. So we'll talk a little bit about that with Linda, but then we'll probably have a proposal for you at the end of June. And then, again, budget amendments, that will be the same meeting. We'll need to not only have the budget amendments, but approve those. And then we'll also just have a discussion on what our transfers might look like to Forty-Six and Fund Balance. The recommendation, Tom and I have learned a lot in the last year, so the recommendation will probably be mostly into Forty-Six. We had some great conversations last year about what we'd get out of Forty-Six, too, with that partial funding back.
Question, not to do with that, but because you said something about the employee handbook, did we update, and I don't know what you all do, for like job descriptions handbook, our website, to like make sure we're looking at our words around the DEI stuff?
That's a great question. The handbook, we will. There's not a lot in Evansville because we actually did some searches with that when the Department of Public Instruction had made a statement about that. Yeah, yeah. And so you're not going to find a lot of specific diversity, equity, inclusion language in the district. You might have some equity language, but nothing specific to DEI.
And our job descriptions, don't they?
No.
Title nine.
Right, yeah, but federal policy like that, we're not changing a whole lot of the wording that's coming out of that.
We're good with the agenda. Before we go into executive session, let's take a five minute.